Time approximately 7:00 P.M. and February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Fairytale Municipal Planning Commission will now begin. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody. Good evening to those of you in attendance online. I want to thank you all for attending tonight's Fairytale Municipal Planning Commission meeting. As you know, we had to skip January meeting due to inclement weather, so I hope everybody had a nice holiday and enjoyed some of that snowing weather that we had. My name is Scott Ruffs. I'm the chairman that will be conducting tonight's planning commission meeting. We appreciate that each of you has taken time from your busy schedules to either attend or view tonight's meeting to observe how our town government works. All Fairytale Municipal Planning Commission meetings are public notice per Tennessee state law. All planning commission meetings are recorded and may be viewed live on Charter Cable one ninety-three and TDS Cable Channel Three, as well as on the official Fairytale YouTube channel. And links to the recordings may be found on the Town of Fairytale website. For anyone in attendance, you should be able to pick up a copy of the agenda at the door when you came in tonight or at the table with Mr. Shipley. If you're not able to attend in person and are viewing from home, you'll be able to see the agenda that is also posted on the Town of Fairytale website. For any persons in attendance who would like to address this commission concerning an item on tonight's agenda, please pick up a blue card with Mr. Shipley and write your name, address, and the agenda item number that you wish to comment on. And also, there will be time reserved at the end of the business meeting for resident comments on non-agenda subjects, which also require you to fill out a blue comment card, again, including your name, address, and also the topic of your comments. That said, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that if you're able, if you wouldn't mind, please standing for a moment of silence for prayer and supletion, to be followed by a recital of the late occasions to our county's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, at this time, does any of the planning commission have any announcements or recommendations they'd like to make? I do have just one. I just want to remind everybody that your statement of disclosure of interest to the state are due, I believe, at the end of this month, if you haven't already filed those. That's Form SS-eight-zero-zero-five, and you can file those online at Tennessee.gov. Okay, moving on, the approval of the agenda. Mark, I've established that we have eight members present, therefore, we have a quorum for tonight's proceedings. And I believe we have amendments to the agenda.
Yes, the staff recommends approval of the agenda with the modification being made to remove Agenda Item Number Seven at the request of the applicant.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
We have a second. Mark let the record show that the amended agenda has been approved. Approval of the minutes. Mark, are there any amendments to the minutes from the December twenty-first planning commission meeting?
No, sir. Staff recommends approval of the minutes as submitted.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
With a motion and a second, let the record show that the agenda has posted, or the minutes posted from December twenty-first meeting have been approved. Commissioners Devlin, Myers abstained. Business items. Tonight, I believe, we have six items to review and discuss, Mark, with the removal of Item Number Seven.
Yes, sir.
Our agenda item number three, discussion and approval of the two thousand and twenty-three Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation Local Parks and Recreation Fund matching grant for projects of Mayor Bob Leonard Park and McPhee Park.
I'm turning this one over to Ron Ostrack, Parks and Recreation Director, and he can review this particular item.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting Local Park and Recreation Fund Grant Project to the Planning Commission. As of the two thousand and twenty census, the Town of Fairytale had twenty-three thousand five hundred and six residents and eight thousand eight hundred and seventy households. You all know we pride ourselves on our parks and our programs, and we're honored to offer a hundred and thirty-three acres dedicated to outdoor recreation. Our parks are a draw for people all over the greater Knoxville area, and likewise, our athletic fields are a draw for teams throughout the region and teams across the country when tournaments come to town. We're here to discuss the grant, which covers four major renovation points. A dog park at McPhee with a restroom facility, the replacement of synthetic turf for Fields One and Two at Mayor Bob Leonard Park, ADA pathway work at Mayor Bob Leonard Park, and finally, the renovation of sand volleyball courts, also at Mayor Bob Leonard Park. We'll begin this with the most fun project, and that's the dog park at McPhee. The dog park will have a restroom facility. It will have an ADA pathway down to the dog park, and then it will be a fenced-in dog park with elements for pets of dogs of all ages, such as colors, options. The restroom will be a drop-in facility, much like we have at Town Hall Park, actually the same design. We learned a lot in that project, so we'll be dropping that one in at the same way, but with some modifications to it. You can see in that yellow area, that is the ARPA-funded Phase Four of McPhee Park. That is the paved parking lot that has been approved. We're just waiting for the contracts to clear, and then that work can begin. Once that work is done, we'll begin the dog park project. You can't see my little whammer here. Dog park is in that white shaded area, and the restroom facility is in that purple shaded Now, moving on to Mayor Bob. As I said, we have two of our synthetic soccer fields, the rectangular fields that are being replaced with synthetic turf. So Fields One and Two will be replaced. Those fields have soccer, lacrosse, football, rugby, quiddish. If you've heard of that, that's the broom game, I guess, conditioning, picnic games, other stuff that can be used on these synthetic fields. These fields are used eighty percent, ninety percent of the time, especially during prime time. We are looking to start this project very soon with the replacement, the removal of the turf. We'll be doing that one at a time, and then replacing that turf with new synthetic. Mark, can you just say it's a line? There you see Fields One and Two. The yellow line you see and the green line you see, those are ADA paths. The pathway around the lagoon will be, that's the third part of the project, will be replaced or all ADA certified all throughout the park. Right now, the pathway leading up to Field One from the Harrison Road parking lot is not ADA compliant, but it will be once it's done, so there'll be some regrading. And as part of this grant, the entire path throughout Mayor Bob Leonard Park will be And finally, the last part of this four-part project is the renovation of the sand volleyball courts at Mayor Bob. So we'll be removing the sand, putting in new drainage, putting the sand back, and doing some other upgrades to the sand volleyball courts. So the impacts in the community, it's our creation of our town's first dog park, additional ADA restrooms, expanded ADA access to the athletic fields, improved safety, and promoting active lifestyles of outdoor recreation. So as far as funding goes, we have received a two-point-seven-three-million-dollar grant. The McPhee Dog Park is four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand of that. The replacement of Fields One and Two and ADA path for the benches is one-point-eight million. The ADA path work is one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. The sand volleyball renovation is an additional fifty thousand. So the total budget with contingencies is two-point-seven-three-million, and the LPRF grant received is a fifty percent match, so we received a grant of one-point-three-six-five million dollars, which is the largest LPRF grant the town has ever received. We also received a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from the Boyd Foundation for their dog park dash program that will also go toward the dog park construction. Our project timeline, we'll be preparing drawings for the dog park and ADA path this spring. We'll be finalizing bid documents for the turf replacement also this spring. We'll be awarding bids for the turf projects this spring. The turf replacement will go one at a time, and we'll start that in July. Projected completion for that is the end of summer. We will finalize bid documents for the ADA path in the fall. The award for the bids will be in the fall, and that project will start in the winter and spring of next year. And then we'll be preparing the drawings for the volleyball project, and that will start in the spring of twenty-five. And then finally, after the McPhee Phase Four parking lot completion, we will finalize drawings for the dog park and the restroom, and that project is slated to start in the summer of twenty-five, if we can get all this done. It's going to be busy for us. Does anyone have any questions regarding these projects?
Well, let me, let me see if we can get a motion to approve first, and then we'll open it up to the commissioners for questions and if there's any comments. Mark, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to?
Show me. I'll save it.
Just a moment, a second. All right. Mayor Williams, would you have any questions or comments you'd like for Ron?
Yeah, in the restroom area of the dog park, is that going to have a, some sort of a watering system for the?
For the dogs, yes, it will.
Okay. Rain barrel, too?
I'm not sure if we're going to do a rain barrel like that. We can, because we can do it.
I'd like to see one, like what we've got at the outdoor classroom.
Okay. Do we know?
That's all good.
Commissioner Pinchot, do you have any questions you'd like to ask Ron?
No, right now.
All right, at this time, I'll, I'll just open it up the floor to any of the other commissioners. Questions, comments? I just have a general comment saying this is fantastic. Way to go, did work. I appreciate everything you've put into this and the planning. It's really going to be a, both of these improvements are going to be huge assets to the town and for future generations, so.
Thank you.
How long did it take for the grant process, for the application and the way and approval of all?
It's a great question. I believe it started, I wasn't here when it started, so I kind of took it over a year ago. I want to say mid-twenty-two, because I started in the beginning of twenty-three, so I'd say mid-twenty-two is when the process began. And then they added to it in mid-twenty-three, so we added more to it, and then we were awarded the grant in October.
Well, we also compliment you and your staff on obtaining one point, one point for your gift to us for doing so. Thank you for your hard work.
I only have one comment, and it's a very good job on the scope and the schedule. I just have a general concern about anything we're bidding on awarding these days, and what the price will actually come out even lower. So just to.
Just got a little worried about that, Mr. Davis, of ours.
We are all very aware of that, so we've had a few projects that we've been a little frustrated against, so we are definitely, we have our eye on that ball.
What's your level of confidence? Do you feel pretty solid about being able to receive, you know, bids within our?
The initial ones, the turf project, yes. ADA, I don't anticipate that, the ADA path work, that asphalt work and drainage, I don't see an issue with that. And then the restroom is a company that we used already, so I think we're set up well for these projects to move forward.
Very good.
Ron, does the twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from Boyd Foundation require an naming rights that are to go along with that? Is that something unusual with the Town of Fairytale?
No, it doesn't. That was the year before, maybe.
That is a great question, because previously about the Boyd Foundation with their, all of their dog parks, they did have the Petsafe branding on their dog parks.
I'm not opposed to it, it would be a precedent that we just haven't dealt with in the past, so.
Yeah, they moved that from Petsafe funding to the Boyd Foundation, so once it switched over, I think they were in speculation for that. Yeah, that's a great question.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate all the hard work. We know how tough these grants are.
We're learning new things every day.
Okay, with the, with the motion and the second on the floor, I'll ask that all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, no's, no-no's. Let the record show that a General Item Number Three has been approved unanimously, and again, thanks for your time, Ron. Much appreciated. Agenda item number four is request for approval for the Turkey Creek Beeline Interceptor Project, First Utility District applicant.
Yes, this project is a major center of a little over eleven thousand linear feet that will be along portions of Turkey Creek, North Fork, Turkey Creek, separated into two phases. First phase starts roughly at Turkey Creek Road, and will go to Old Colony Parkway in Village Green, and then the second phase will go to the interstate. I'm going to turn over this project to Edwin Dayton with First Utility District, and he can review the rationale for the project and the necessity for it, and the overall scope of the work, and hopefully answer any questions that you all may have. The staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way permit for this project, subject to the conditions that were included in your staff recommendations that have also been sent to First Utility District. So with that, I'll turn it over to Edwin.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you all for letting me be here tonight. And I sympathize and commiserate with your effort on the art of the process. That is the ultimate moving target. It's challenging as any funding source under that department. We have two of those right now, myself. I wanted to take just a moment, and I'll do my best to not be long-winded. I think answering why is always a big question with any project we're doing, so I want to make a brief effort to do that, just to kind of identify our approach and our considerations for what we're doing on the project. Big picture, what we've done across all of our service area, which is Fairytale and West Knox County. We've seen a lot of, a lot of growth and a lot of high-density growth, and it's made us evaluate what improvements are necessary on our side to do that, or to accommodate that. So we've master-planned across all of our service area with about a hundred thousand folks. We've looked at every parcel of land that's two acres or larger, and we've identified the improvements that we think are going to be necessary in build-out to accommodate every given piece of land. And based on that population count and contribution and flow to our system, we've identified what improvements are necessary to support that growth. That means we're looking at how big the pipes need to be, what pump stations need to be larger, what do we need at our mechanic facilities, like a treatment plant, to be able to accommodate that and still put clean water out to the water. So as we've identified those projects, there's a cost associated with those, and we have built a financial model where we're looking, as new people are coming in, we've, we know what, we think we know what it's going to cost, but those cost concerns are variable, like you just talked about. But we're coming up with a dollar-per-customer basis of how we're cost-sharing those fees. And our model for doing that is that as developers come forward and they need, they need capacity, they're paying their fair share. We're not looking for our existing customers to subsidize the improvements that we're talking about tonight. So that's, that's really our model, is an equitable share for the growth in the development of the community, and we share those with you. So kind of where we are in our, we have about twenty-five million dollars in wastewater projects under construction, and we're projecting probably another thirty million on that in the next decade. So we've got some big, big changes we need to make. Our lines and the, big lines in the Town of Fairytale were put in in the mid-seventies, and Fairytale West Knoxville is a lot different now than it is, was forty years ago. Much like driving on Campbell Station Road, you're always concerned with the traffic. So we're trying to plan out to twenty-fifty for what we need, based on what's coming, and also solving any operational problems we might already have, trying to do that at one time. So the subject project we're looking at, like Mark said, is our, it's our beeline interceptor is what we call it, that follows that Turkey Creek fork from Turkey Creek Road up to Interstate Forty generally in that Campbell Station corridor. We're looking at upsizing that line. We're looking at doing phases. Our first phase is eleven thousand feet, and it goes from Turkey Creek Road to just south of Old Colony Boulevard in Village Green. We're trying to time the second phase of our work based on, we're trying to time it based on the Campbell Station interchange project, and it sounds like that's been pushed out of D Doc's ten-year plan, so we will be doing our best to time that effort to match up with that road project and the new customers we have moving into our service area, so that we time that well and don't end up doing it twice. Some coordination items. Town staff has been really helpful working with us. We've tried to have stakeholder meetings, just to get their input from parks, public works, engineering, planning, so we kind of can bound our project and know what we need to work around. Our timing is we are hopeful to bid the project, advertise the project for construction April first. That is contingent on permits. We're working, obviously, for the Town of Fairytale right-of-way permit. We've got TDA right-of-way permits. We have two petroleum pipelines with crossing and three permits with TDA. All but one are applied for. Some of them have been applied for as early as late November, and we're still working through them. So our precise time to start the job may not be April first, but that's our target until we get confirmation that we can bid there. Appreciate Mark sharing some of the questions in advance, so I could help, hopefully, answer some of those and do it in a big-picture way. We're expecting a one- or two-year construction project. I've had contractors tell me that they think they can get it done in two-hundred days. It's awfully tough for me to believe. It's wet, and there's some time restrictions in our contract, one of which is Foundry Park, so I would fully anticipate that it's more like a two-year project, but we've got some bidders that think they can do it in less than a year. If they can, that's fantastic. One of the timing restrictions I mentioned is work in Foundry Park. I have my footage figured, but I think we've got about twenty-five feet of that existing line that are in the Eastman and Foundry Park. We've worked with Mark and some of the parks and public works folks, and we are going to constrain our work with no work in the park and no occupancy of the southern parking lot from September fifteenth through January second to accommodate the schedule for lighting and taking down the lights. One of, I guess, the things we've been discussing with the town is using that southern parking lot as a staging area for the duration of when we're working in the park. It's twenty-five hundred feet, so it will, we will be there for a little while. We found our contractor from being in there during that time. As a condition for using the parking lot, we will be proposing to mill and overlay the entirety of the asphalt in that section of the parking lot and access road to that, and we'll be releasing a section of easement that won't be used as a result of going through the parking lot. Mark, you're welcome to jump in if you think I missed anything on there. Please do. And we'll be restructuring it. We will do that once construction in the park is over, and we will do that outside of the contract, probably using a PRI, and make that a larger payment restoration for us, and have it re-strapped up to match to the existing condition. There are several road crossings, like you'll see in your packet. The three most significant crossings we have are South Campbell Station, North Campbell Station, and Kingston Pike. Fortunately for schedule, mess, and budget, we're able to reuse the existing crossings, and we don't have to do any work in there, so that will move our project through faster. We've got existing steel casings under the road, under those roads, and we're able to reuse those. We do have two minor, well, Turkey Creek Road is a more major road crossing. We've got a traffic control plan included in your plan set. It's a very similar scheme to what we did when we had to do a total closure on Turkey Creek Road during the Concord Road lighting project, so it's same engineer, same scheme, and we expect to do that as night-per-weekend work to avoid school traffic, commuter traffic, that kind of impact. And we have a second for minor road crossing in Rustfield that would require open-cut construction, and we've worked with Darrell Smith on casing pipe requirements, backfill requirements, and details for how to repair asphalt according to the local road standards. We do have all that included in our plan set and specifications at this point. Some of the things that we're working towards now, working on getting final plans, we're working on getting permits, we're working on obtaining easements, and we have contacted all property owners that would be affected by the line work, and we would need an easement from. There are just a few, but we have been sending them letters and copies of documentation, and we've done some representative appraisals through there. So that's work in process for us. Once we're permitted, we will be making public notice through direct customer emails, phone calls, social networking, and mailers that need to be. Mark had identified some greenway impacts that he'd like us to take a look at. We're certainly happy to accommodate any access signage or payment details that need to be taken care of. That was a lot. I said I wouldn't be long-winded, but I was. I hope I didn't ramble too much, but I wanted to catch some of those questions.
No, that's fine. I have just two things, Mark. One, just to pull the record, you can insert your name and your address.
Sure. Edwin Dayton, First Utility District, one-two-two Derwood Road, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Okay, great. And Mark, I was going to ask, do you have any other slides that you want to review before I open, to ask for a motion and then open up for discussion?
No, I don't have any other slides, and it's a little bit hard to see in this kind of presentation, because it's a very, obviously, very linear project and very detailed.
The great majority of the work we're doing, ninety-five percent of the footage is in private utility easements. The only work in public right-of-way is through main road crossings that we're reusing, and then the cross of Turkey Creek Road and Rustfield. Ninety-five percent of the footage is in an existing First Utility easement.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve with the subject to this following that the staff recommends. We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll save it.
Mayor Williams, you'd like to open up the discussion?
No, matter of fact, you should cover it pretty well.
I've got a few questions.
Mr. Green?
I spent a lot of my career on big projects, and this one doesn't look very complicated. I mean, you give me the trenching, some pumping, but the logistics and the impact on the property owners and on business owners and on traffic and all that, looks like it has an opportunity, a lot of opportunities for problems. For example, I guess you've got aggregate to go in all the trenches, right? So you've got truckloads of aggregate coming in, and I noticed some of the. And I noticed some of the, some of the routing is quite far away from the road. So I'm not sure how you get from the road to where you got to bring in the aggregate and to bring in equipment across pieces of property. That's one thing I thought about. The other thing is, I would expect, is there some fair amount of tree removal involved in some of this property? So how does that work? Chopping down trees on private property or?
Well, again, most of this is in a utility easement and a good bit of the utility easements we already maintain with bush hogging. So I mean, that's, that's something we do and should do for keeping our easements clear. So if we do have a maintenance issue, we have access to respond. So I hope we don't have a whole lot of trees. There's certainly brush and weeds and grass and some of these.
I would expect, how wide are these trenches, by the way, Russell?
It's a 15 foot wide easement. The biggest lines we have are on the southern end and they're 30 inches. So you're probably every bit of a five foot wide trench.
So you got a two mile, five foot wide trench, so.
Unfortunately, most of it's been dug before, so that means we should get through it faster and not have as much truck.
Now, do you have the piping laid out, proposed? I've heard you mentioned one by the park there, but every, probably every section that you've got blocked out of the diagram, there probably needs a staging, right?
Certainly the big chunk through the park is a half a mile and it would be staged out of the southern parking lot and we would be obligated to repair it. We have a parcel that First Utility owns on the corner of Turkey Creek Road and Concord Road. It's small and not big enough to stage the whole job, but, but can be something we can use on the very southern end and access through there. And we've reached out to three other property owners to try to negotiate a lay down area. And I don't want to use names and we're, we're having mixed success, but one of them looks pretty promising at this point. And beyond that, it's not often we provide a staging area to the contractor, right or wrong. Sometimes that's a means and method of where can you get access and how do you get the work done?
Yeah, I commend you on the project. It sounds like you're looking for work in this area. It just sounded like there was an opportunity for impact on the community and with traffic and with the equipment moving in and out, materials in and out and all that kind of stuff going on. I noticed that I've been, what was it, I've been, three of the subject twos here. You're going to have meetings, you're on board and meetings for each segment of that work at the time. Do you want with the plan for that particular segment?
Missed that one, but certainly, I mean, we'll have monthly progress meetings and we can invite town staff to the meeting if dated or provide a special meeting.
I'll read this one to you. Prior to initiating work in each section, that's in rural squares, a right of way permit and a pre-construction meeting with the town, town staff will be required. Some locations may require tree protection fencing in addition to silt fencing. So are you familiar with that?
Familiar with the erosion control requirement. I did not post town meetings by section.
One of the, one of the questions we ask folks is, are you okay with the subject twos? It sounds like you may not be familiar with all the subject twos here, so.
I did not notice that subject two. I read through that and caught the erosion control and tree protection question. I did not catch where you wanted to have.
So you, you're familiar with these? Just, you're okay with all these subject twos here? There's, what, there's 12 of them?
Mark, tell me your, before I say yes, tell me the explanation of what you're asking for on the meetings by section because we don't, we don't have project sections identified. They're just sheets cut on alignment with match lines.
I'll get back at it.
Certainly we're under your jurisdiction on dealing with anything, dealing with anything in a public right of way in any kind of road crossing, both yours and the T-Doc depending on who the jurisdictional authority of that section of road is. The rest of it, I think we're pretty tightly bound by a T-DAC individual aquatic resource permit, a T-DAC SWIP and our plans review. I'm not sure I understand what the subject two is for meeting by section.
My computer's being a little tinky.
The impact is on that particular section. It's going to be working on over the next week or two weeks in a row, not just you, your contractor. Your contractor is not reading any of this. So somebody needs to sit down before he does some work and say, you know, this is what you've got to look out for. We don't want, we don't want you running over this guy's parking lot with a truckload of whatever. You know, so I think it's just a coordination meeting to make sure that the town, proper and the residents of the town know, kind of know what's going on and that the people are aware of the possible impact. So I think that's kind of what we're, we're asking. So when we vote for approval here, we're approving all these subject twos here that, that it's, that you're committing to and that we're committing you to. So I guess we need to know that you're comfortable with it.
I think I just need to understand what you mean committed by section. I don't know if you're asking about the land sheet for work in a private easement. Is that, is that not a right of way permit?
What, what I understood by this is.
I can explain that. Well, it's such a linear project, you're going to have to do it in sections. And my computer's completely zapped, so don't pay attention to the screen because there's nothing up there.
Mark, were you saying the section debated one of the, I call it, segment for match line?
Yeah, it, it could be roughly that.
John's thinking, I think, a little smaller than that, like what's the next day's plan?
No, I, I think what they meant here was though you had a drawing there with each little section that's labeled on your, on your construction drawings. And I, I'm presuming that's kind of what they're, they're thinking. I don't think it's that formal. But I think they want to, you're going to break the work into some logical work sections and I think they want to kind of get together with each set kind of work section and try to make sure everybody knows what the right hand and the left hand's doing and the town knows what both hands are doing.
But you were describing something on, the whole segment not taking, you know, multiple weeks. But you were describing something.
I'm just reading, so I'm just, I'm just reading out of here.
Well, it's just, what is the word, the section?
Well, I presume on the map, on the, show that drawing again with all the little blocks on it there.
Yeah, let me get my computer.
That's what we refer, each section kind of the cut sheets, what they're saying.
I presume that's what they were talking about.
All, all we're really talking about there, and this is, this is pretty common with subdivisions, is if you've got a really large area, you're going to obviously only work in sections of it at a time. And what, what we would do is for those sections, we would, we would want to have a pre-construction meeting, I would imagine, that would coordinate with town's engineering staff and First Utility District just to check all the fencing, the, if there's a construction entrance needed or any, any kind of logistics, signage, barricades, you know, all those kinds of things.
Honest question for me, is the town inspect the erosion control or is that the T-DAC Knoxville?
We do inspect that. T-DAC may also for this kind of project, but we definitely would be doing inspections of the silt fencing and tree protection fencing if you need any tree protection fencing. But obviously what I'm talking about is you're not going to go in and put a bunch of silt and tree fencing in the whole project. You're just going to take it section by section in manageable, manageable sections.
From the south and come to the north.
Yeah.
Will be great if we do 50 feet at a, so it will be slow moving by section. I think I misunderstood your question. We're happy to involve the town if you'd like to attend our monthly progress meetings as a stakeholder, if that, if that's the question.
I think that would be a good idea from the town's perspective because it, especially with the parks, the outdoor classroom and Founders Park and then a couple of streets that would be bored and hopefully our open trench cut, Rustfield and Old Colony. I think from our perspective, it would be good for us to have somebody to work with you all so that we're aware of everything that's going on for the project that's coming through the town. And that way we can, you know, coordinate that with you or help you if we need to do anything on our end to, to facilitate the project. Obviously, the Founders Park is huge for the town because we want to ideally minimize the amount of time that it's affected, you know, and if you can get out quicker than the January to September timeframe, obviously that would be ideal for us, so.
Certainly the contractor will get there as quick as they can.
Yeah, we'll want to, we'll want to really work closely on, on that section. And then on the walking trails, there's a lot of our walking trails that could be impacted by the project and we just want to, you know, make sure that we're coordinating all that work and closing trail sections that we need to just so the public's safe, you know, and they're not going into areas that are actively under construction.
No, that's, that's very fair to work together and protecting the greenways, certainly any public road crossing and any work in Founders Park, foundation property. Don't have any objection with that.
Edwin, I think the biggest way to solve this and still meet the intent of that item number three is just extend an invitation to the town on those monthly pre-construction meetings or construction meetings. And if the town wants to send a representative, they can, if they decide not to. And if they decide not to, I think the staff can work out whose email address you should put on the invitation and, and that way there's, when they, as you're moving from south to north, if there's areas of particular concern, the staff can get involved. Those areas that, hey, they covered last month or it's rained for four weeks. There's no reason to show up.
That's the answer. I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Green, does that, does that satisfy your answer to your question?
Basically, it's for making sure there's a dialogue between the town and the construction project.
Sure. Very similar to what we do with the cable cabs when they open the train.
Before we close the discussion, are there any commissioners, other commissioners having questions or comments for Edwin?
I've got a, a quick statement. Edwin and the, and First Utility has been a great community partner since the town was founded and I support the project. I will be abstaining on this particular vote. It does cross my arm and First Utility's been very transparent with what they're doing and again, I do support it. However, I'm going to abstain on the vote.
Newly noted. All right, with that, well, with the motion that has been seconded on the floor, I'll ask if the motion stands as presented with subject twos?
Yes.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Take it a second on that.
Commissioner Myers, that stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate it. Let the record show that the request for approval for the Turkey Creek beeline interceptor project is approved with a vote of seven yes, one negative. Or I'm saying it wrong. Moving on to agenda item number five, discussion of public hearing on a request to amend the future land use map and the comprehensive land use plan update for the property located at 209 North Watt Road from Parks and Recreation to Commercial. The applicant is Jeffrey Wilkerson.
This item was discussed at the December Planning Commission meeting as a workshop discussion. Basically, this is a request to make a future land use map consistent with a pending rezoning request for this property. Property has gone through the board for first reading for rezoning from R1 to C1, general commercial. The property's future land use map designation is Parks and Recreation. And that really came about from the Watt Road Community Input Workshop that we had a few years ago where some of the properties that abutted Mayor Bob Leonard Park were given a Parks and Recreation land use designation as potential areas for the park to grow. And so that was kind of the rationale for the current land use designation for this tract. The requested change to commercial land use would be consistent with the C1 zoning request and also consistent with properties to the south of the, the particular location here and the general plan of development abutting this particular tract. So the staff does recommend approval of the change to the future land use map that is shown in Resolution 23-13. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Let's start with a, we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Resolution 23-13.
Mark, do you have anybody signed up to speak to address this issue or the resolution?
I do not. Who was the second on that? Is it Ed?
Ed.
I have no question.
Yeah, I think you passed this one out as a market workshop discussion. So any of the commissioners have any additional comments to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to do this to you guys again, the, the, I'm the broker of record for the Wilkerson family. I will be abstaining from this particular vote as well.
What are you doing here?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, there's no further discussion and a motion seconded on the floor. I'll ask that all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, as the record show that.
The miners have said.
Amended, amended feature land use map and the comprehensive land use plan update for the property 209 Watt Road from Parks and Rec to Commercial is approved with a vote of seven yes and one extension.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Moving on to item number six, a discussion of public hearing on a site plan for tire storage enclosure and baller barrier at the Firestone Complete Auto Care, 11215 Kingston Pike. Applicant SGA designer.
This particular item came about from some property maintenance matters that the town's been addressing at this location. There had been some used tires that had been piled up outside of the building and also some cars that in the past have been parking on the north end of the parking lot in the grassed area, which was not designed for parking. So we have been communicating with the applicant to try to address these items and that's reflected in this particular site plan. Regarding the tire storage issue, they're proposing to construct a, a brick enclosure. It would be just a designated space to put the used tires. It would be on the north side of the building and the northwest part of the site, roughly 10 feet from the property line. And then they would be preventing cars from entering the grassed areas to the north by installing 10 ballers along the north edge of the parking lot. And that should take care of that particular issue. We did ask the applicant if they felt like they needed to add more surface parking and they did not feel like they needed to do that. They had some extra cars on the property, particularly during COVID. It was kind of a unique situation that they ever had to deal with. And then also as part of the site plan, they're addressing an existing deficiency with dumpster enclosure. They are going to be adding new gate doors to the enclosure to bring it into compliance. So those things are what's reflected in this particular site plan and we appreciate the applicant working with the town to get these matters rectified. And the staff recommends approval of this site plan, subject to coordinating the site work with the town and obtaining any necessary building permits. I think it's mostly going to be from the fire inspector, just making sure that he's okay with what's being proposed as we are storing tires in this particular structure. So with that, if anyone has any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Okay, well, first of all, let's go ahead and I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve this presented.
Second.
Okay, Mark, we don't, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this topic?
No, sir.
All right, I'll turn it over to you. Do you think, do you think you've covered it? Yeah, just give us your name and your address real quick.
Yeah, sure. My name's John Savina. I grew up in Firestone. I reside in Oona, Tennessee. So my address is 520 Shute Mountain Road, Oona, Tennessee.
Commissioner Myers, would you like to open up any questions or discussions on this project?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate Firestone's willingness to address some of these compliance issues and, and kind of deal with some of the issues that y'all have over the years. We appreciate the business that you brought to the town for many years. Been a good business partner at the town and I use your services personally and appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Devlin, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask or comments on this project?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, I'll open it up to the rest of the commissioners. Commissioner Green?
I have one question. I went down just to look at the property. It looked like you have two dumpsters out there. One is a dumpster container and the other one sits in the parking lot. Is that going to go away? One is on a pretty dumpster and one's in the parking lot.
That's, our intention is to have it in the enclosure. I'm not sure to the second one and when that was there, but.
It's been there for, well, I've looked at it prior to the January meeting. I was there and I just checked before I got in the studio. It's still there. So apparently it's a permanent thing. It's not the parking lot there. So you have two dumpsters. So I guess I would recommend is to give it a one or make a bigger dumpster enclosure. Here's the one I got.
Yeah, the dumpster in the parking lot is one that has to be removed, obviously, because it has to be within the enclosure.
Other than that, I have no questions.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? So you're, you're okay with that, Mark, then, just the way it is without adding any additional garbage for the dumpster enclosure?
I mean, if they feel like that they have, and that was also a question that the staff asked the applicant. Not necessarily gentlemen here, but Firestone in general, if they needed to expand the existing dumpster enclosure. And apparently they don't. So I'm not sure if part of what they're storing in that, that second dumpster is, are the used tires potentially that this storage area would take care of. But they obviously can't have a dumpster just sitting out unscreened in the parking lot because that would be a property maintenance issue.
John, what we're saying is that if there's an opportunity, this is the opportunity to enlarge the dumpster enclosure to meet whatever needs that y'all have, whether it's the recycling side or the refuse side, this would be the time to do it. My understanding, when I looked at the plans, it looked like that you could accommodate all that, but again, we want to get you into compliance as much as possible. And so these are some things to think about. If this is new to you, you may want to go back and, you know, talk to your store manager and figure out how to deal with this. Again, the easiest way to do this while you're doing this construction is to accommodate all your needs that you have for any kind of, whatever's getting, whatever disposal items that you have to be able to get inside a dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, I fully agree that the dumpster's not adequate to be sitting on a parking lot. And, you know, I don't think that they need two dumpsters. Most of our stores do not need two dumpsters. Why they have to, I, it's just something I can't speak intelligently to right now. If for some reason they do, I would ask that we could modify this plan and create a time for approval.
Are you going to need garage?
Yes.
Actually, how do you deal with, I mean, you deal with a lot of tires that have to be recycled or disposed of in some manner. And that, that's one of the things that we're trying to address as part of this is, is to, all the, we call it the used tires. Try and get those where they're, they're outside. So how do y'all normally, is that, do you have somebody come by and pick them up twice a week or?
We do. We have a tire recycling company that we partner with that comes in. It really depends on a couple of things, really. How many, how many businesses the store does, how many tires they're, you know, replacing. Some are monthly, some are weekly, some are twice a month. So it really just depends on the business demands. This particular store, I believe it's weekly, the pickup, but that can fluctuate throughout the course of the year based on sales periods and things like that. So the design plan would be more than sufficient.
That, that's what we'd want to be.
Yes, it's more than sufficient.
All right. With the discussion completed, lasted, let's see. We have a motion and a second. It's subject to acquiring the building permit. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
No's? No no's. Let the record show that agenda item number six, site plan for tire storage enclosure and baller barrier for Firestone Complete Auto Care has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item seven has been removed. Agenda item number eight is request for approval for the installation of 650 linear feet of two-inch gas line along a portion of Boring Road and Boring Lane to service the residents at 217 Boring Lane. Applicant is K V.
Yes, this project will initially start on Boring Road, kind of where it has a turn there going, goes due north and then turns to the west, basically in that intersection. And then we go under Boring Road. There'll be Boring under Boring Road. And then following the south side of Boring Lane along the frontage of 204 Boring Lane, ultimately to service the residents of 217 Boring Lane. Since this is a new gas line, it does require the review and approval by the planning commission. The staff has reviewed this right-of-way permit and is recommending approval, subject to the two conditions of obtaining the right-of-way permit from the town's engineering department, which involves coordinating erosion control, traffic control if necessary, and then notifying the affected residents along this section of work. So with those subject twos, the staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark, is everybody signed up to just go on this?
No, sir.
Motion, this is a clarification, motion to close the two subjects.
Yeah. I'll break that up on my phone later when we come around after the discussion. Thank you, Ed. Mayor Williams, do you have any comments for the applicant? Questions?
This is all going to be boring. Excuse me.
Very good. If you would, can you give us your name and your address, please, and then I will, I'll, for further discussion.
Colton Watson, K V, at 4505 Millbrook Highway.
Thank you, Colton. Do you have anything to add as far as the addition to the discussion that Mark brought up or descriptions of Mark?
Nothing in particular with that, just that we are rerunning this service due to lightning strike at the property. So they currently have a CNG trailer set up, so they are able to be serviced. So it is a priority for us since we've only got two CNG trailers to service the county.
Thank you, Colton. Mayor Wade, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, what, what property was the lighting strike?
I believe it was 217 East.
Commissioner Myers, do you have any questions for the applicant or comments to make?
So we talked about some directional boring. I assume you're going to do some open ditch as well, trying to do the tie-ins. Any other open ditch that we, we need to be aware of? Is, is just one or two property owners is actually going to have anything kind of going on in the front yard is what I'm seeing. Actually, there used to be one property. I think it's subdivided a few years ago, but it still may be the same property owner. That's on the south side of Boring Lane?
Yeah, it's 204. That's the south side of Boring Lane. Yeah. It's mostly just that one property owner that would be more affected.
So are you seeing any, are you envisioning any kind of open ditch there?
No, I didn't. It's just the directional drilling and then kind of the open ditch.
You are aware that there's going to be a school up there?
I would not aware of that.
Not quite that far back, but overall, kind of that, that's the southwest side.
Southwest of that corner.
Yeah, this is not a line that is designed for that. This is just service related. I mean, it's not a service line, but it's certainly not a sufficient line for the school.
Commissioner Green, do I heard commissioners have any comments or questions for the applicant? I think that's a no. Colton, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We've got a motion on the floor that's been seconded with the, with the subject twos. So I'll ask for a vote now. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
No's? No no's? Mark, let, let the record show that the request for approval for the installation of 650 linear feet of two-inch gas line along a portion of Boring, Boring Road and Boring Lane servicing residents of 217 Boring Lane has been approved unanimously. Moving on, and Mark, do we have any residents signed up for comment?
No, sir.
Okay, and Mark, do we have any utilities?
We still have one more item.
Tree ordinance.
Yeah.
Number nine, discussion of public hearing on amendments to clarify certain definitions provided for in the town area of public tree care ordinance.
This is a representative minor change to the town's public tree care ordinance, which was adopted in February 2022. We created the public tree care ordinance as one of the components that's required for Tree City. And I would, I'm unofficially announcing that we were just granted a few days ago, finally, after many years of trying Tree City designation. So we hope to do something later this spring, more formal, to acknowledge that. I received the signs. They're propped up against my wall in my office. So I'm very excited about this. And so that's a little reason why we have the public tree care ordinance. And really, the intent of the public tree care ordinance was to establish some parameters for tree planting on public property, tree care on trees that are on public property or trees that are in private easements, but they're like walking trail easements where the town has the responsibility of maintaining the trail and then potentially trees that are planted along the trail for benefit, for the benefit of trail users. So one of the definitions in the, in this ordinance, it's obviously very important, is the definition of what is a public tree. And currently, it's a tree that's growing on land owned by the town of Fariot. And it would also include trees situated within walking trail easements, and those are on private property that are maintained by the town of Fariot. One of the things, and street tree is also a definition that is tied to the definition of public tree. So that's why we also include this in a particular amendment that's being proposed at this time. The main reason that this is being presented is recently an issue came up regarding the maintenance of trees. In this case, they were actually trees that were planted by a developer in an older subdivision within the town's public right-of-way. And it's trees that have been, you know, planted for the benefit of this particular subdivision. And this is frankly common in a lot of our older subdivisions where a developer initially gone in and planted what would now be considered streetscaping trees within public rights and ways to help beautify their subdivisions. So and we also see that along Parkside Drive where a developer went in and heavily landscaped the medians in the middle of Parkside Drive, which are on town property in the middle of our public right-of-way. So in, in looking at the definition of public trees that we have right now, it's pretty broad. And so one of the representatives of this, of this particular subdivision understandably felt that since the trees in question here were planted in the middle of the boulevard, they're on our property and thus they were ours to maintain. Historically, those trees and other trees in similar situations have been maintained by the homeowners associations because that's who they benefit. And we didn't require them to be planted, nor had any review of the trees that were planted to, you know, provide feedback as to whether we felt they were appropriate for the location. So in looking at that, I think a good point was made with that definition. And so we went back and kind of revisited that. And on the screen there have the existing definition of public tree, which I read earlier. And then I had originally had a, an earlier definition of revised public tree. And then it's kind of one of those terms that the more you think about it, the more scenarios that you come up with that really probably need to be captured. So this particular, although lengthy, and this could be just for discussion, we don't have to necessarily take action on this if you're not comfortable with it. But this particular definition that's on the screen is intended to basically, again, clarify that public trees for maintenance and the way that they're applied in the public tree care ordinance, which is mainly dealing with maintaining public trees, that it would be considered a public tree if it has been planted by or required to be planted by the town of Fariot. The reason for that is if we're requiring it, or we do it, we have reviewed it like we do with streetscape plans for newer subdivisions. And so we look at whether the tree that they're proposing and the location they're proposing that is appropriate. And we don't end up with large shade trees in a three-foot grass strip that has to be dealt with, you know, later by the town and by homeowners association. So that's the intent of that first part. And then secondly, talking about the walking trails, that's just clarifying that those would also be considered public trees, even though they technically would be on private property within a walking trail easement, that those would be ones that we would maintain. And then thirdly, a public tree shall not include trees planted on land owned by the town of Fariot that were approved as part of the development plan to be maintained by homeowners and/or property owners associations. A couple of examples of that would be Parkside Drive is one of them. We'd never maintained the trees in that, in those medians. We didn't require them to be planted. Frankly, probably wouldn't have recommended some of the trees that were planted in there. So those were set up as part of the development plan to be maintained by the property owners association. All the entities along Parkside Drive contributed financially toward the maintenance of those trees because they benefit most directly the businesses and entities that are running along Parkside Drive. And then in terms of the homeowners association, a good example came to my mind with the cottages at Price Farms. There's those large rain gardens right in the middle of the town's right-of-way. We've never maintained those, and those were set up to be maintained by the homeowners association, just like the little sidewalk that runs through the middle of part of those rain gardens. That is one that is maintained by the homeowners association. So that was kind of the intent of that last part of that definition was to capture those kind of situations where you have a development plan that has been approved by the town, but it specifies that the maintenance is to be by entities other than the town. So that's basically what I'm proposing as the new definition of public tree, although it is longer than I would like. But again, I wanted to get your all's feedback. If you're not comfortable with it or you have other items that feel need to be addressed or clarified, we can certainly revisit that. I think one of the other questions was even trees that wouldn't fall under the public tree definition necessarily as proposed. If they do fall across the street, we still maintain those. We get them cut up and get them out of the street, even if it's trees that were planted by a homeowners association that we didn't acquire or directly plant. But we still have a role for public safety, you know, like we've had these storms in the last snowstorm. There were some trees that fell across streets. Obviously, Public Works is, their role is to make sure those streets are reopened and, and so that they're passable for public safety. So those are situations that, they're addressed in the, the public tree care ordinance, but not necessarily under the definition. And I think personally, I think they're sufficiently addressed in tree removal section of this particular ordinance. So, but again, that's, that's kind of an overview, a long overview of what started out as a simple amendment to a couple of definitions. It's kind of evolved into a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I have a motion to approve Resolution PC-24-01. I have a motion to approve Resolution PC-24-01.
Motion to approve, second.
Mark, I think that adding that proposed definition, though, I don't think that provides the necessary context that we're looking for. Definition. I don't know, all of us, open it up. Anybody else have any comments or questions for Mark?
I have one.
Mayor Williams?
On the public safety part of it, one more, where we, where we have with the trees that disrupt the sidewalk, make them, where there are trip hazards, that may not necessarily...
I mean, like trees that, that were, we didn't plan or require to be planned, but they are too large for the space.
Well, just where they approach on the side, their roots approach on the sidewalk, it causes sidewalk, which is a safety issue.
Yeah. You know, those, we have to look at on a case-by-case basis. I know we have one subdivision where that's, we've worked out an agreement with the homeowners' association regarding the sidewalk and trees. They wanted to keep the trees, which I understand, but we can't afford to go in to these areas and redo their sidewalks every few years, because they've got trees that were, are too large for the space that they're in at this point. And we, you know, we have a couple other subdivisions that have kind of similar situations, but maybe not to that extent. So in those cases, where it's, if it's becoming a public safety issue, then we, I think we certainly have the ability to remove those trees if we feel like that that's the best course of action to take. There's really no way to, to remedy the situation without, you know, taking the tree out altogether. And sometimes, unfortunately, that's, that's going to be the answer. And tree removal, if that's addressed in this ordinance, does talk about that, and it gives, I think it gives the town certainly the latitude to be able to make those decisions, because the trees are on the town's property, you know, if they're in the public right-of-way. And if we feel like they're creating a safety hazard because the sidewalk's being buckled and it's a tripping hazard for pedestrians, then, you know, I think we certainly have the ability to go in and take those trees out if we had to.
Thank you, Mark.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, so you're saying that the town would be responsible or not responsible, that the town is willing to take the tree out? Is that what you're saying?
I think if it's creating a public hazard, a safety-related issue, that we, we could do that, just like a tree that falls across the road, obviously, we're going to remove that. Whether or not it's considered a public tree under this ordinance, it's just, you know, what we have to do, that's our role to keep our streets safe. Same way with sidewalks, if we've got trees that are causing massive issues with sidewalks, we would, you know, get with, if it's in a subdivision, we'd certainly get with the subdivision to see, you know...
Have we done that? Have you had any situations where...
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah, we have had that.
Who, whose responsibility is it to repair that sidewalk in the next...
Well, we have repaired, we have done some repairs in some of these instances, but then it gets to a point where if you go back multiple times and it just keeps getting worse, then those are situations where the town has basically said, okay, you know, we, if, we can't keep doing this because we have other, other areas that we have to maintain. And if you want to keep the trees, then, you know, this is, is something that, you know, you're going to have to, to maintain in the future moving forward. So I know that we've done that with at least one subdivision in the town.
They won't keep it if it falls back on nature?
That's right, that's right. I think we can go in and fix it maybe once, but, you know, if it just is a recurring issue and it's going to get worse and worse, then it's, there's really not a lot that we can do at that point, other than giving them the decision of whether they want to keep the trees or not.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, with the discussion closed, I'd like to ask for another motion with the proposed definition. Just one motion to approve with the addition of the Mark's latest proposal for a public tree definition.
I think you had a motion to say...
Well, I didn't, I didn't add in the proposed definition portion of that, though.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. I think we covered it.
The latest one, yeah.
The original motion...
That's fine. Motion stands with the...
Yes.
Motion, motion stands, so at this time, I'll ask all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
No's? No no's? Let the record show that Resolution PC-24-01 is approved unanimously. And now we can move on to utilities, Mark.
I, I have none.
No utilities, so the time is approximately 8:15 PM, and without objection, the February... We, we cover that out of order. Sorry. The February 15, 2024, Fariot Municipal Planning Commission Meeting is now... Thank you, everybody.